The East Fish Kilts Planning Board Meeting will now come to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
John Eichman.
Steve Caswell.
Ed Miyoshi.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
Christopher Tamiolinas.
Michael O'Brien, and would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the upcoming meeting dates we have are August 20th and September 17th. Right now, I believe that there is nothing on either one of those agendas, so...
Lovely.
Let's look to fill them, but, okay. Approval of the meeting minutes, June 18th. The cheat sheet says Lori, myself, Steve, John Cutler, Craig, Johnny, and Ed were here.
Yep. That's fast.
Okay. Have anybody had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
In favor?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight is an extension of Stone Ridge Commons. It's on for a six-month, oh, excuse me, it's on for a one year or six months?
Whatever you're giving out tonight.
Okay.
We'll take it.
Oh, I don't know about that.
We'll go for a one-year extension, I'm sorry, yeah.
No new information?
But it's had three and a half years, but I'll let you tell the tale of whoa.
We've had a couple of extensions. And we're moving forward with the project in a slightly different approach, so we should be coming to a conclusion soon.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, it's, it might be giants to look at that model, but, okay. Any, anything else you want to share, or?
No, no other updates, just looking for the extension.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the board? Michelle, any? So do I have a motion for a one-year extension for Stone Ridge Commons?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I appreciate it.
Extension is granted, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hope it was worth your trip tonight. Okay, the next item is an application for a special permit to a in Loma Lane.
Loma La?
Loma Lane.
How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
So I, I don't know if you remember, but I was here a couple of months back when you guys came to the property.
Right, January, and I think we visited...
January, February, I don't remember, but there was snow. That's what I do remember. We did try to go for the variance for zoning for the 55 feet. They did come out to the property and they just deemed that it wasn't, you know, we could go along with the 100-foot setbacks. So we went back to the property owner, he wants solar, so he's willing to go to that 100-foot mark on that one side. So, I don't know if you need me to reiterate everything with the project, but I could go over it again if you need.
Just in summary...
Yeah.
It's been moved, the panels, it's still the same number of panels?
Same number of panels. We just moved the one side, it was, let's see, the north, northwest side was the one that we were requesting, it was a 55-foot initially. And now we moved it to the 100-foot, so each one, it's 100-foot on the one side, 160, 180, 120. So we got all, we're within the 100-foot barrier now.
Okay. And have you heard any comments from the neighbors, or?
He told me, I haven't personally, but he told me that both neighbors are supportive of it. And if you recall, if you look, I don't have, I have pictures and stuff if you need them, but we have screening presented on both sides of the property, so the neighbors will not be able to see it. So it's five trees on the left side, five trees on the right side, it will block the vision from both properties.
I'm sorry, I missed it, is that proposed screening or current screening?
Yeah, proposed screening, so we will be, yeah.
Okay, that was gonna be one of the questions I think that was made by the professionals was, would there be screening?
Yeah, and if you have the survey in front of you, I don't know if you have copies, I do have some here. Yeah, it's kinda hard to see on that big screen if you want me to bring it up, but, yeah, like I said, the left of the array here, the neighbor would be on the left side, we have five trees there, it's in a yellow color, so it's kind of difficult. I have the plans if you want me to just pass it along so you can take a closer look.
Good, but, so whereabouts will the screening go?
See where the 100-foot line is, there's five trees proposed right at that property line there.
Ah.
And then the 160, there's five trees proposed on that side. And if you remember, you probably don't remember because it's been a long time, and now the trees are actually grown in, but there was a little bit of a gap between both sides of the property, so that should block, you know, that should block the view from both.
Questions or comments from the board?
So are you gonna show the landscaping on the plan?
It's on here, it's just done in a very light yellow color. I can, you know, pop it, so it's a green, so you can see it, but, yeah. The Sujah tree, I think it's called, the Green Giants is what we were going with. They grow three feet a year, anywhere from 12 to 20 feet wide and 50 to 60 feet tall. But it's a good spot where they are because it won't go anywhere near the array, so.
Now, I understand, when you were in front of the zoning board, you did not have a public hearing?
No.
So this does need a public hearing?
Yeah, I assumed.
So, I, well, unless there's any objections, I think we're just gonna move this to the next meeting for a public hearing.
Okay.
Can you notice all the people and time and all of that? Sorry?
You gonna have enough time?
I'm sorry?
What you'll do is you'll coordinate with Pam?
Yeah.
And she'll let you know when you have to have the signs up by and when you have to have your submission.
Okay, yeah. Sounds good.
When do the notices need to go out and all of that, what are the key? 20 days. 20 days.
August 20th.
20 days, business days or work, or just 20 days? 20? Okay. Yeah, sounds good.
So for August 20th?
August 20th, 35.
It's, yeah, it's, it's a little tight, but not unmanageable.
Yeah, so when's the next meeting?
I'm anticipating that this is not gonna be a...
August 20th.
August 20th, got it. Okay. Yeah, no, we can make it work.
Thank you, I'm glad one of us was paying attention. Okay. Anything else, I mean?
Did you just make a motion to schedule a public hearing?
Yep, motion to schedule a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, we'll see you August 20th.
Yep.
We'll just reiterate that the public hearing is gonna be August 20th.
Yeah, got it. All right, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
He's moving right along here.
Thank you, comments from the peanut gallery? Sorry. Take his microphone away from him.
I'll be in jinxes.
No, not at all, no, 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 when Michael's here, I never worry.
There we go, okay, the next item is an amended site plan for Global Foundries LLC.
Security enhancement.
Hi. Good evening, my name is Roger Keating, I'm from the Chasen Companies. Here tonight on behalf of Global Foundries to give you a presentation regarding the proposed site plan amendment that is centered around doing some security perimeter improvements, as well as the reconstruction and reconfiguration of some of their parking as it relates to the, to the perimeter project that we're looking to do here. So the project is, like I said, envisioning to do some security enhancements out there to create a perimeter that we can basically control the ability for vehicles and pedestrians that come in and out of the, out of the plant. We're gonna do that through a series of things like guide rails, fences, natural barriers, some landscaping, as well as the buildings themselves help create some of that perimeter, so. And then also, with respect to some of the parking out at the, at the plant, we are, we are gonna be reconfiguring some of that because we're gonna be having some new gates that will allow for the access control into the facilities, as well as an area that we're gonna be doing some new parking where the former building 322 was. It's been, it's been demolished and there's an existing concrete foundation and slab that's still out there, and we're simply gonna be putting, using that slab, but then building a parking surface on top of that. So we're basically working with the existing building remains that we have out there. Just to go over the, the big picture piece of this for you is that the perimeter, if you think about it as it sits today, is we're over at Route 52 and you would come in the main gate, you would, you would see a series of gate arms that are up there. A lot of times you see that they're just, that they're up, but, I mean, you also have something like that on the backside near Limekil Road, right? If you were to come into that side of the plant. Things have changed over there, and obviously, the, the use of those gates is somewhat limited for what the facility now Global needs to be able to do. So the idea is, is ultimately those, those gate arms would all be removed, and we would create some new gate arms that would allow access to what, if you recall, for, well, it was Lot 5 when they did the subdivision of, of the parcel, which is now Global Foundries. And that'll provide, will provide new access gates, but they'll be just for getting in and out of the plant itself. And there's really two points where we're gonna be doing that. One of them is off West Road, or West Drive, which runs along the bottom of the page here. And then the other is on East Road, which is kind of the back of the house. And what we'll end up having is, is those new, those two new points off of there, which would allow for the creation of some new gated points, so you'll have a similar type of configuration that you have out near Gate 1, which would be on the West, West Drive side of things. And you'd have a similar configuration on the backside at Gate 3, which would come into Facilities Drive. And the nice thing about this particular perimeter project is that we're not looking to put up fencing to create the entire perimeter of this. We're looking to try to utilize a lot of what we already have out there, buildings included. And so, for instance, along West Drive, if you drive down that, that roadway, you'll notice there's a raised median that's in between where the parking lots are and where West Drive is itself. So there's a lot of, like, entry points into the driveway that exists out there today. We're gonna, we're gonna close a bunch of those, so there's not as many. And what we'll end up doing is filling in that area similar with the raised median that you see there today with the street trees and everything else that runs along there. And what that does is it creates a nice soft perimeter for us because it still impedes a vehicle from just driving in there, but it, but we don't have to put up fencing, you know, to, to create, like, almost like a prison-type of look, you know, if you think about it. When we get up on the east, the east drive, or east road where we come in, we would simply be looking at the roadway that's Facilities Drive that's there now, and we would just put gate arms down there with some guide rail that connected to the buildings. Again, not needing to put big fences up or anything like that in those areas, just something to, to create a vehicle barrier per se. So somebody can't just drive around the gate, you know, and get around it.
Roger, I remember reading somewhere that this was Homeland Security requirements.
Well, there's, there's a component of that, yes, because there, there's a piece of that that requires them to, to basically keep the perimeter, you know, so it's not easily being able to have somebody just freely driving in.
That they could quarantine it if they had to.
And we can, the nice thing about this scenario that we have here is we can, we can, we can make the, so that the gates are, that are down, the security measures that they have in place at the facility now, meaning it's under surveillance, there's cameras at those gates. Today, we'll be reconfiguring those, those configurations out there so that we have the ability to maintain those as well in those areas. Yes, sir?
Will there be a guard shack at the gates?
There's not, the, the gates will be kiosk gates, similar to what you see out there today. They'll have cameras on them, intercoms so that they can interface, and they'll have badge readers on those as well. So in the event that somebody went to the wrong gate, for instance, the gate's not gonna, the gate's not gonna go up, they'll have to interface with, with security, and then they either escort them or, or direct them as to where to go from that point of view. But there's, there, now, there is the ability that if we ever had to, for some reason, down the road, we made the islands big enough that they could put a manned kiosk in there, but we're not looking to do that right now, okay? And just to hit on a few other points, just with respect to the perimeter, just so you get an understanding of it. So there's some other areas on the site, like in the back around East Drive, once again. There's, there's some areas back there that have existing guide rail. We'll simply be extending those guide rails to, or replacing them in some parts to then just, you know, again, along the roadway there to create that perimeter, so we're not looking to put up fences in there. Where we are looking to do some fence work, though, would be in the areas around Building 300, which is more central to the site. And if you were to drive out in that particular portion of the site, you would notice a retaining wall that has an ornamental fence that's along the top of it. We'd simply be looking to pick up that ornamental fence, once we got into the courtyard area of Building 300, and extend that through and along the parking lots, and basically go building, you know, connect it to one of the buildings and then reconnect it to where the retaining wall ends, so that's really that. Yes, sir?
Just, all the dotted lines that are around, like, Area 3, Area 4, what does all of that mean?
Sure, so these are, so if, I just pull out the larger set of plans here. These are just areas that I have enlargements of.
enlargements, okay.
So each one of these areas that you see on the map above, we have some dash lines that allows you to, to, to see an enlarged area. I could pull up an example, if you'd like, really quick, just so you can see what I...
I'm looking on here, just, now I, now I get it.
Okay.
We, I know there was like a huge elephant home of, of the prints, we were not given that, we were given it online.
We're more condensed, so... Sure. Okay.
Don't assume that we know the, the missing pieces.
Well, that's, that, I completely understand, there is a lot of, there is a lot of plans because there's a lot of these little areas that are, that are throughout. For instance, if they have, like, a small pedestrian area where they never had a gate before, for instance, two fences stop, but it's just a whole open walkway, we would simply be looking to do, like, a pedestrian gate in a location like that to help close off the perimeter.
Do you have a drawing that shows the entire perimeter that you're trying to create?
Well, there, the perimeter itself would be the, approximately the property line of Lot 5. If you were to follow the property line, it, it most closely follows that with these...
So up on the site map, that, looks like that is your perimeter?
For the most part, there are, again, there's some areas of it that stops at a building per se.
No, I get it, yeah.
But if I, if you would like, I could highlight that if you needed me to show you that.
No.
And then just to touch upon a little bit of the parking is, again, so we're gonna be reconfiguring a little bit of the parking in order to, to accommodate the new gates. And we'll be creating a new parking area, that's where you see central into the, the project site. Right around here, or in the center portion of that, is where the former building 322 was, and that's where we have the concrete pad that, and foundation that's currently existing out there. And then we'll be building up on top of that to create a new parking lot.
Are you eliminating parking and then building new parking, or?
We're taking away a little bit of parking, but then we are reconfiguring a little bit of it as well. So, for instance, when we're building the new gates that are out there, or that we need to construct, we're gonna be constructing them in, within portions of the existing parking lot. But, for instance, like along West Drive, where we have all these open driveway connections, so people can all leave. Well, a lot of those are being closed because we wanna restrict those. We're adding parking back in those, those locations from that perspective.
Well, I'm just wondering, do we need to have, I mean, are you utilizing all the parking you have now, or, you are, okay.
Yeah, so the, the building...
I was just looking for a way, maybe can we eliminate some parking and put some...
The building that came down is actually gonna be turned into a parking lot because right now they have people that are, you can correct me if I'm wrong, walking from pretty far distances to get into the buildings or having to walk through buildings. So they're, they're trying to condense the parking for Lot 5 in one central area and allow people to be able to access it, plus keep it more secure.
Okay.
And that, because the, the anticipation is that there will be more public on this site in the future, so they're trying to make it harder to access the manufacturing facility.
Okay.
Yeah, they do, they do have some parking that the people have to walk through the building in order to get to this particular location, so this, this parking that we're adding in the center really is gonna serve a few buildings there.
Did you want to touch on the additional core testing that...
Sure, most certainly, yeah. So, so what, what the chairman is referring to is that in the building area of Building 322, since the building has come down and it allows us to be able to gain more access to that, that building pad, they're, the, working with the DEC, they are going to do some additional testing for soil in that area so that they can, that they can determine what, if any, is in the ground over there and how they would, how, if we needed to dig in it, how we would have to, to go about, you know, working within that, within that soil. So that, that is one of the things that will be taking place prior to us building anything with, with respect to the parking lot. But it should be noted that we are building up on that parking lot, I just wanted to be clear on that, that, you know, we are, we are gonna utilize that existing concrete surface as...
Basically, you're gonna, you're gonna build it up so that you don't have to dig down and...
That we don't have to, and, and, and open the potential for something like that. So if we can do something along those lines that was incorporated into the design versus, you know, pulverizing that or something, and then, you know, potentially having to, to do more or have to work with that material more. Does that answer your questions?
Yes, it was just kinda...
So who does the core sample?
The DEC is, or a...
I think it's a, it's a company that will take the tests and then you'll send the results to the DEC, is that...
Yeah, so they'll, they'll work with, they'll work with a contractor to, to perform that test with the D, in, you know, with the...
So they supply the contractor, not Global Foundries?
No, it's, I believe it's a, it's, I believe it's a joint effort between Global with, with their, their people or a contractor that they bring in to do that, that testing. But they have to submit those results back to, to DEC.
There's typically protocols in place to make sure that...
I don't believe it's the DEC themselves bringing machinery there to do the test.
No, I knew it wouldn't be, I just wanna make sure.
Okay.
And we're recommending, the staff is recommending that there is a condition on the resolution of approval that asks that the applicant provide any, any of the correspondence for the testing to the town prior to them starting construction on that parking lot, to make sure that they, the DEC has cleared, that basically cleared it from whatever they're going to do, because the DEC, it's my understanding that because there was a building there, they were never able to take some of the soil samples, and so now that the area is clear, they can go down and take some soil samples. They're testing to see if there's anything there that they need to be concerned about, they don't anticipate that there will be, but if there is, then DEC will make a decision about what level of cleanup needs to be done, if any. And then at that point, they'll have to do it, and we wanna make sure that we're receiving the correspondence from DEC so that we understand what, what's asked of them prior to anything happening on, on the slot.
Right, so if they do find something...
They have to...
They have to mitigate it, they have to...
Right, whatever mitigation DEC requires, they would have to do prior to construction. We don't want them to construct something, then have to remove it.
But they can't just say, "All right, we're not gonna do this parking." At that point, they have to...
It doesn't matter because they're gonna test no matter what. Now, they're testing, and they're gonna have to do whatever DEC requires them to do.
I think we're gonna condition into any kind of thing that gets approved. You know, taking a bigger picture here, I mean, I, it's, it's my assessment, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that basically what we're doing is we're taking the same kind of set of standards that now encompass the entire site, condensing them to a smaller area, thus allowing, you know, the I-Park to pursue residential and other types of uses for the 52 corridor and the 84 corridor much more freely than they would otherwise.
Yeah, and what it allows, so your, your point is, is very valid in that if you were to keep the, the gates that are out there today, if Global needed to, to lock it down, like you said at one point, well, that would create a very unusual set of circumstances there, right? With other users there, whereas now, this brings those gates back into Global's control because it'd be on their property, and then they would be able to control those access points from that perspective. So it gets it off the main roads, as West Drive and, and East Road, and brings them internal to their own, their own space. Whereas before, they had the whole, they had the whole campus, and now we just have our portion of the facility, so. Correct.
Questions or comments?
And I have one, one comment, I, because of the minor nature of most of these improvements, I think the planning board could consider this a, a minor site plan amendment. But that's up to you, and of course, you would need to make that determination.
I believe we do have a resolution. I mean, is anyone adverse to proceeding to the resolution, or are we additional questions or comments? We have a neg deck.
Yeah, and then, and the way the resolution is, is written currently, there is a condition that does not allow them to construct that parking lot until they provide to the satisfaction of the town and the DEC that they have met all any protocols that may be required, may or may not be required, I should say.
You read ahead, you're telling us how it ends.
I'm just saying that just to let you understand where we're, you know, what, what staff is thinking about it.
Let me just summarize the neg declaration, you're, you're welcome to copies of it, but basically, again, the name of the action is the Extension and Restoration of Parking Lots and Fencing and Construction of New Parking Lot on Lot 5 of the Global Foundries Subdivision. The title, I think, is longer than my summary of it, but it's an unlisted action under SEAKER for which we have, we are not conditioning a negative declaration. So basically, the, we are, we are finding, the neg deck is based on the following criteria. One, that its proposed minor safety improvements would be constructed entirely on existing impervious space. The historical contamination that could exist at the site is not gonna be in any way affected by this. Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. And then there were, again, and then we go down the, the standard criteria that there's, doesn't generate significant additional vehicles, no impact of endangered species, no impact on historical or archaeological, no impacts related to hazardous materials, air quality or ambient noise levels are not affected, does not change the flood plain, it does not have any new aesthetic effects, doesn't affect ground or surface water, does not conflict with our zoning districts, it does not have any adverse growth-inducing impacts, and is in sync with the town's comprehensive plan. It's pretty much a reshuffle of existing... So, based on that, we are finding a non, a neg deck. Any negative declaration, any questions or comments on that? Did I summarize it too? Okay. Okay.
So you wanna vote on that?
Pardon?
You wanna vote on adopting the neg deck?
Yes, so, I was gonna, do I have a resolution?
I would move approval of the neg deck.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, the neg deck is approved, and I, can I have your copy, I'll sign it, but, 'cause I've marked mine out. Does anybody have a neg deck, and I keep that, all right, if there's an extra copy, if you wouldn't mind passing it down, okay. Sorry, a little housekeeping here, sorry. Okay, so now we're on to the resolution. Does one of the board members wish to offer the resolution?
I can do that for you if you want.
Okay.
Name of the site plan, Extension and Restoration of Parking Lots and Fencing and Construction of New Parking on Lot 5 of the Global Foundries Subdivision. The applicant is Global Foundries US Inc., the location 2070, Route 52, Hopo Junction. The resolution offered by Planning Board Member John Cutler. Whereas the applicant has applied for the amended site plan approval to better secure and restrict access to the Global Foundries Manufacturing Facility on Lot 5 of the Global Foundries Subdivision. And whereas the proposed site plan amendments include the following. One, extending the perimeter gates and fencing around the Lot 5. Two, restoring existing parking lots. Number three, constructing and installing pedestrian and vehi- vehicle safety improvements including crosswalk signage, speed control devices, and lighting. And four, constructing a new parking lot on top of the former Building 322 slab. Whereas the action is considered an unlisted action under SEAKER for which a coordinated review was not undertaken. And whereas the planning board has determined that the project would not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. And whereas the planning board adopted a neg declaration on July 16th, just a few minutes ago. And whereas the board finds that the application meets the requirements for a minor site plan approval. Now, now therefore, be it resolved that the amended site plan application for the above project as represented on a map entitled Global Foundries Extension and Restoration of Parking Lots and Fencing, prepared by Roger Keating, PE of the Chasen Companies, dated May 7, 2019, is hereby approved subject to the following condition. Number one, the construction of a new parking lot on the Building 322 slab shall not commence until the town has verified and approved that the applicant has followed the required New York State DEC protocols related to testing and evaluation of the sole beneath the slab.
Okay. Thoughts from all, please? Any additional... Any additional conditions?
Is that the correct date for the plan, the last plan?
We did have a minor revision that we had provided before, we should probably just note that for the record. So Mr. Chairman, if you would, the plans would have a revision number one of June 24, 2019, with the footnote of response to Town Comments.
Okay.
Okay, we'll add that.
June, dated June 24, 2019.
Okay. Okay.
That's all.
Okay, good to go, okay?
Okay, be it further resolved that within five business days of this adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, Jason?
Aye.
John Cutler?
Aye.
Sorry, Craig?
Recuse.
Steve?
Recuse.
John Eichman?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
My vote is aye, the resolution carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Kai, have that neg deck, please.
We don't have it.
Here. Thank you. Okay, thank you. The next step is William. Can I wait till the end or you want them now? I'm sorry?
Don't forget.
Okay. What have I ever forgotten? And what is this, the fifth time? Thank you. Do you, like, contract with Cutler to just harass me or is that? He just does it out of the volunteer. Okay, this is on just for a discussion, sketch plan review, so welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ciro Interanti, the architect. We were here, I guess, three or four years ago after the building burned down and, but then there was some complications with the insurance company, so the hardware store moved to Unity Plaza. So now it's back for approval, to be rebuilt on that site. What we're proposing is to build on the slab that's existing. And if you look at the table of bulk regulations, we're in compliance with the zone B2. The only question that I had was under the side yard setbacks in the town regulations, it says one side 10, both sides 10. Now, in some codes, I took that to mean that it could be zero on one side and more than 10 on the other side. So what we have is, and I'm not sure if that's the way it's interpreted in this town, but we have zero on the right-hand side and 43 feet on the left-hand side. So if that's in compliance, then we have no variance issues that I can see.
You would need a variance for the side yard, it's supposed to be 10 on each side.
Oh, it is, okay, all right. So we'll need a variance for that. But the intention is to build on the same footprint and have storage in the backyard like was previously arranged, parking in the front and the parking on the side. So it's pretty much, the site pretty much isn't going to change from what it was.
Except the building's going to look a lot nicer.
This is not being touch metal, I'm just curious. It seems like there's more space in the Unity Plaza store.
It's not true, I promise you, that Unity Plaza store is 6,400 square feet and my old store was 10,000 square feet. I had more selling space, we were able to, there are whole departments that I can't sell out of Unity Plaza. You know, we're looking to improve our business, improve the town, you know, put a nice building there and do what we've been doing for a long time.
So is space the major incentive to come back or do you feel like it's visibility? I mean, and I'm just asking.
It's everything. It's much more difficult to work in the space that I have, you know, my outdoor area included. You know, the things that we can have outside, you know, the 30 something years that we had that store there, nobody ever stole things from the front of my store. That's happened four times now.
Wow.
You know, people cutting things, bolt cutters, you know, driving off with grills at four in the morning, I didn't have that problem.
Wow, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
It's okay. So, I mean, the intention is to, yeah, the space is an issue, the backyard is an issue, the nicest thing about the plaza is the parking, you know, and I know everybody says that and it looks like it's a bigger store because it's much cleaner and I took the ceilings out so that, you know, it felt bigger inside. It's much harder to work that way. My business would improve being in our own building, in our own space, you know, there's a thousand reasons to move back, but I mean, those are the main reasons, yeah. Visibility is a big reason.
So you're staying on the, in the existing footprint, what about like use of the parking lots, like you, you know, there was demonstrations and sale stuff in the front and then there was like the chain link in the back, is that all, is that all part of this?
We do not intend to use the same type of fencing, I mean, we intend to make the property pleasing aesthetically. You know, our intention is not to put up, you know, just a metal building that's going to look like garbage in the entrance of the town. We want, you know, we want to rebuild the building on the same footprint because we can't build it without that footprint, you know. You know, the plan for the building is to look very different than what we had, it's, you know, a much nicer look inside and out.
Is it only going to be single story?
It's going to be a single story occupation with about one-third of the back half of the store used as a mezzanine for storage so that we can eliminate some of what's outside.
Is that new?
It was.
The old building didn't have that.
No, 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 the old building did not have it. You know, our intention is to try and, you know, eliminate, I have multiple off-site storage facilities to try and, you know, Hopewell's not a giant town, but we do a big volume and it's hard to maintain the inventory that we have to maintain to, you know, to support the community with, without the storage space that we need. So we've been looking to use that as storage space to eliminate some of that issue that we have.
Do you have a rendering of the building with you?
Not with us, there is one, I forgot to say.
We have it in the office, we can get you a copy of it. So this is in front of us right now for a sketch plan, so I think they're looking to get some feedback about, you know, anything that you would think that they might want to incorporate in their design to maybe mitigate or improve on the conditions that were there previously, you know, things that you guys might, you know, the outdoor storage or any ideas that you would have and then perhaps the ability to, and I'm just throwing these things out there, I'm saying they're even feasible, but, you know, if there was a possibility of connecting parking lots or somehow finding them additional parking or laying out the outdoor storage so that it was more accessible in some way or whatever it is, that's the kind of feedback I think that they're looking for, if anyone has any great ideas to give them and then also they're showing you their concept and they will need a couple of variances because the parking is really not going to meet the current code requirements and I know that was always sort of an issue there, so there's a few things that we have to kind of work through, but right now they're looking for feedback and some comments.
Was there ever a formal agreement with the restaurant next door, it's kind of like a parking easement, because I know that, you know, your hours complemented each other very well.
Right, they did, so there was nothing formal about it, honestly. We just were two businesses working together, you know, people parked in his lot to come into my store, people parked in our lot and walked over to his store, it's, you know.
What's your assessment of the old store in terms of the parking? Did you ever feel like there was insufficient parking there or was, did you ever feel it from your business, I guess?
From the business standpoint, not really, you know, we operated fine with the parking that we had, we, you know, we were a business there for, you know, 32 years or so with, you know, obviously increasing population, but still, you know, able to maintain with what we have.
Parking was always, always a real struggle getting in and out of that.
It was not, it was not super easy for people to park in and out of there, but.
I think part of that too was people were carrying big things, I mean, you know, hardware is generally.
Well, that's true too, right. Normally not walking out with something in a small, you know, paper bag.
Yeah, so, but don't get me wrong, I mean, you guys have been one of the cornerstones of the business community there, so.
So what is the possibility of maybe getting a formal agreement for shared parking with your neighbor?
I would have to talk to him about that. It's not, it's not something that we've ever discussed, so.
Certainly not a bad idea, it wouldn't hurt to see if there was something that they might be, the neighbor might be willing to do, we can talk about that.
So if there were an agreement, the parking wouldn't be as much of an issue?
Well, I mean, we have a shared parking law, so.
Right, that's something that we could, we could consider, absolutely. There's also some comments which were just issued on July 9th from the Fire Advisory Board, have you had a chance to see those yet?
I have not seen them physically.
Okay, so I can give you this at the end, just because it may, some of the comments may affect how you might design the end, it looks like they've laid out some comments of the outdoor space, so.
Sure.
And you know, I can't remember, was there a fence dividing the parking lots in the back?
On the back half, yes.
Okay, so it'd be like things like allowing people to go out the back and go in, out through a light or something, but.
So, yeah, so the, I mean, it would obviously pose an issue for like a lot of reasons, there's merchandise back there, you know, we would be, you know, it's an area that we'd like to be able to close off at night, obviously, you know, right now they spend 40 minutes bringing grills and fire pits inside, so, you know, so that they don't get taken. The less people I have in the area going through, you know, the better at night, anyway.
Okay.
Michelle, I guess I'm wondering how this is going to work with the proposal that you had told us about with the potential, the road and the roundabouts there, yeah?
So, I mean, if that were to occur, this site becomes more visible, obviously, and actually there'd be really kind of road frontage along 82, but also along the side currently now, that's the side yard and kind of the partial rear yard. And I think for, from the town's perspective, we would just want to make sure that it looks nice from the outside and that it's well-kept and that it's, you know, landscaped or fenced or whatever it is and ultimately, the planning board should weigh in on that, keeping in mind that at some point in the future, potentially, there could be some sort of frontage along those areas. But that's all part of consideration when we look at the site plan approval, absolutely, and they're aware, we've mentioned it to them and I think they're absolutely willing to work with us, so.
They're absolutely willing to do whatever we need to do to, you know, please the town, we don't want it to be, you know, we want it to be a nice building, we want it to look nice, that's our intention.
And I did, I did do some scouting.
Yeah, I think this is a good discussion.
Over the, I was away last week and I was in Cape Cod and there's a True Value Hardware Store up in Provincetown, which is very limited with space, so I did take some photographs and I will share those with the planning board, just to show you, I'm not sure that we would necessarily want to implement some of their techniques, but the design of the building, I'll show that to you and they, they have a little kind of like a front porch overhang, which is where they put a lot of their outdoor stuff, but I'll share those photos with you and you can.
Sure.
I don't know if it'll give you any ideas or not, but, but this is obviously something that is challenging for communities with villages and towns with small areas, you know, so.
Picking up on Michelle's comment, I always got the feeling, I mean, there was a certain charm to the old building, but you always got the impression that it was really designed to only be viewed from the front, that, yeah, it was, so that, you know, I think what you were saying was this new building would have to, you'd see a lot, people would be seeing.
It'll be, we know that it may be seen from the side, right, our intention, whatever we do on the front would definitely wrap the left side of the building at the very minimum, we don't know what's happening, you know, on the right, we don't know what's going to happen to the left, right, it hasn't happened yet, but, you know, our intention is to make the building so that it's not, it wouldn't matter, right, I want it to be able to be viewed from every side, I want the building to look nice, you know.
And I think one of the things we also talked about at one of our meetings was potentially having an overhang in the back where the storage is to keep things sheltered, which also might help and I think they're exploring some of these different ideas that were already presented to them.
We are and True Value has a division of people that specifically do this, they design the inside of stores, they help design the outside of stores, they do have people that work specifically on, you know, outdoor storage areas, you know, just making it pleasing to the eye, I know that, you know, pallets with plastic hang off of them aren't a pretty thing to look at. You know, we do intend to have a garden area, hopefully, we can put the garden area outside of the, outside of the pallets so that, you know, it would be a hidden area, it's not something that you're going to look at from the street on any side. You might see plants, right, but nothing offensive, that's the intention and that's what we're looking to do with True Value to try and, try and come up with a plan for that would, that would be acceptable.
And I hope we're not leaving the impression that we were all offended by the old building, because I don't think that's the case, I think it was a certain charm to it, it had it, you know.
Sure.
Yeah, I did too, that's kind of the point I was trying to say without tipping my cards, but anyway. I mean, in terms of feedback, I mean, other.
No, can I just go back to the parking for a second? I mean, the design here shows 26 plus one handicap, has there been a calculation on what would be required, given a building this size?
It's usually one space for every 250 square feet and is it, I don't care, remember the square footage of this building.
It's 10,000.
10,000, yeah, okay.
Plus mezzanine?
Plus the mezzanine, yes.
Yeah, so.
I can't do the math.
Well, it's four for every 1,000, basically, so, you have 40 spaces.
More like 40 or so.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's typically, there's no hard and fast rule because you can't, but my guess is that the majority of the time, the parking is sufficient, there are probably Saturday mornings or whenever people are busy, then you probably run into some parking issues, so if there is a way perhaps that, I mean, in general, I think Hopewell would benefit from having the commercial buildings have more accessible parking, more accessible parking between the two lots, like more access between the lots, so, I mean, if that's something that can be done, I think that would also help alleviate and maybe we could work something out and help, help you with that.
I would definitely look into it.
Michelle, as we go into this, the fact that this is just a store that is rising again on the same footprint, how does that change, you know, from, are all bets off relative to variances or is there?
The problem is there's a timeline, there's a time, yeah, exactly, it's grandfather for one year, so, so they're just, they're beyond that, I mean, everybody understands that they were there in existence previously, so I think that's, that, you know, we can look at this as an opportunity to improve upon what was, what was there and make it a more functioning store, I'm sure you have ideas of how to maybe even set up the, your inventory that will help the flow of the store better.
Sure.
So I think, I'm sure there's a lot of things that can be done and I think that's the kind of feedback that would be, I think, welcomed for them so that when they're going back to design, they can, they can provide you with whatever you guys want to see, basically. Within reason.
Are there any specific questions that you want to ask us that we'd do?
No, I could work with Michelle on making sure that we have everything that needs to be shown on the, on the site plan and building drawings. And we can explore the possibility of some shared, you know, parking facility with the neighbors. If we can arrange that, that might help.
Good.
Seems that the parking was the major issue here.
I think parking and the outdoor storage are the two.
Outdoor storage.
Yeah, I think those are the two main issues.
And, and again, I think that's, you know, true of the entire village, that parking tends to be a limiting thing, that people are afraid of leaving your car at one store and going to other stores while they're there in the village. You know, lest you take your life in your hands, so.
There'll be a spot for you there.
I'm always afraid of running into other board members who chase me down, but anyway.
So you two guys will go back and resubmit once you have?
Well, we can work on it and then make a submission for the next meeting. What's the submission deadline for the next meeting?
For the August twentieth meeting? It would be the end of the month, which I don't know if that falls on what day.
Should they not be going to the zoning board yet?
I just don't know if it's a weekday or not. It's a Wednesday.
Right.
Should, should they be going to the zoning board?
Yeah, they're gonna have to go to the zoning board, but I think what we'll do is have them come back first and for another discussion and and figure out exactly what they need, because we don't, until they design the building, we won't know for certain that.
They definitely need a side yard.
They definitely need the side, and they.
What's the other one?
You're, are you okay with lot coverage?
Say again?
Are you okay with lot coverage?
We are. We're under for the building coverage and we're under for the lot coverage.
But there could be something else, like, I don't know what the design of the building is, maybe the height or something that they might need if you do something.
We're under for, we're under for everything, actually.
Okay.
Except the side yard.
Just the side yard, and then the parking. That's the only issue, and that, that's something we actually, as a planning board, we have that special permit.
We can, yes.
And as this concept is developing, I mean, at the risk of promoting bad habits, I mean, it would not be unheard of for people to come in and say, "Well, we, we had this submission on the twen-" I mean, at the end of the month, but we found some new ideas."
Do you want to?
And kind of share that type of thing, so.
I mean, I guess.
Don't feel like you've got a three-week.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt. Would you want, do you want to get started with the zoning board?
Well, I think it's probably a good idea that we understand exactly what variances we're gonna require and then just go there one time and ask for all the variances at the same time.
So when you're, when you feel like you have a good sense of what you're going to need, then.
Well, I'll work with you. Maybe we can figure it out ahead of time. If we do, then we can make the submission to the zoning board.
Okay.
And run parallel with the planning board. Okay.
Any other questions?
Because I'm, I'm thinking you might actually also need just, I'm thinking of something like for your, if you're putting fencing, you might need it for the height of the fencing, because you, I don't know what side, height fencing you would need, but you, in the back, I don't know if that's what you're planning, but you might need that for security or whatever. So there might be other variances.
Yes, probably for the rear end of the store, assume.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Welcome back. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Phillips Farm, solar farm.
I'm getting here. I'll give you the fire comments and I'll write on here, okay?
You're just, you're just difficult. You're a difficult person to deal with.
And I'm here on Wednesdays and Fridays.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Steve McDonough from Amoresco, and I just want to introduce myself and our company before handing it off to Eric from Bergman Associates, who's gonna describe the project a little bit more. But Amoresco, we're based in Framingham, Massachusetts, we're a diversified energy services company, so doing everything from energy efficiency to renewable energy to energy infrastructure projects. And we've developed about five billion dollars worth of projects since about the year two thousand, at the federal, state, and municipal level. And from a solar perspective, we've developed about a hundred and sixty-nine megawatts worth of projects with another two hundred megawatts in construction. So I just want to introduce the company and, and, you know, looking forward to hearing the discussion. I know we're looking for feedback from this project. The current owner of the project, or the current owner of the farm, Eric Phillips and his family were unable to attend tonight, but we're working with them, you know, very closely on this project and, you know, looking forward to your feedback. Thank you.
Yes, I can, I'm Eric Redding with Bergman, and I can give a brief run-through of kind of what we're proposing right now and get some feedbacks, feedback on the project and the layout. We did a couple of different options so far, and would like some feedback if you want, you know, the panels moved in a different area or larger setbacks, things like that would be helpful. So the access to the community solar farm is going to be off Route eighty-two, which runs right through here. The access drive is about, its gravity is about two thousand linear feet long. The panels themselves will sit on approximately eighteen acres and will have the capacity for four point nine eight megawatts of energy, AC, and that's the general gist of things. The two options, this option shows it a little bit more out of the, the field, the farm field here, and but shows a little bit more tree clearing along the edge over here, where the other option shows a little less tree clearing over here and a little bit more of the farm field being utilized for the solar panels. We have done some initial environmental review, so we're looking at wetlands, streams, and things like that. And we did find that in the woods over here, there is a fairly large wetland, in which case this option that showed that the tree clearing in this area, actually, there is a federal wetland in this area here, which would be a, a large disturbance, would require, you know, a lot of permitting. So there's still some nip and tucking to do as we move along, but those are the, the two options and kind of what we're proposing at this time.
And again, this is a sketch plan application, so they're, they're coming in for initial feedback, and I, I have one question. There's, is there a planned subdivision with this, or is this?
I was just going right with you. I was just thinking.
Yep, no planned subdivision.
What is this, to be determined from the owner? They have talked about potentially carving out that portion of the project, you know, in its own separate entity, so that is possible.
Could you repeat it? We apologize for the folks at home. Stay near the microphone.
Yeah, it's really, you know, up to the Phillips Farm owners at this stage, but that has been discussed, but I'll, you know, let them comment, you know, in future meetings about that.
I had a question, and that was the market for this. Is this, who is gonna use this power and where is it going?
Yeah, your question. I meant to mention that when I was in the project.
Yeah, so, yeah, right now, in, you know, the, the current rules in New York State, they allow forty percent of the power to be taken by what we call an anchor tenant. So that could be a local, large company, a local school district, that could be that, you know, anchor tenant, so up to forty percent of the power associated with the project, you know, could go to the anchor tenant. The other sixty percent right now is slated as residential, small retail, community solar. So in that case, we could work with the local towns and, and, you know, areas around here. So they essentially receive a ten percent discount on their energy bill for anyone that wanted to sign up for this project, so really benefits the community, both residences and, and, you know, small retail and commercial operations.
Now, will that be distributed through the existing grid, or is there gonna be like another power line that, that will be, to be added to the drawing later?
No, they'll, they'll connect directly into the grid, so once the, you know, it's really, they're not getting power directly from, you know, the project itself. Once it's on the grid, all the electrons are mixed together, but the concept is, you know, to incentivize projects like this so they can actually be built, you know, add more clean power to the New York grid, and, you know, New York has some of the most aggressive renewable energy goals in the country. I think it's like fifty percent by, you know, twenty-thirty, I forget the exact, so that's, you know, the incentives are great in New York, and it's, you know, really gonna be beneficial to, you know, whether it's the school districts, you know, receiving significant discounts on their energy bill, or whether it's small, commercial, and residential customers as well.
How many acres of disturbance are you showing right now with the, or covered with the?
So with the disturbance, that would, the disturbance would just be where we would clear the trees. So I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but the one option, you know, where we show, you know, more of the tree clearing over here, that would be a larger amount of disturbance.
And do you know how many acres are covered in total with the solar panels?
About eighteen.
Eighteen, okay.
Yep.
So why would you even entertain that option?
Entertain, to save more of the, the farm field.
Yeah, the ridge line, do you have a feel for where the ridge line is? I was trying to remember in my head as driving by. I think, you know, it's like the, the Y-shaped thing that is, is the ridge line that is visible from the road.
I'm not sure.
Okay, I'm not sure either, so.
Yeah, as, as far as the visibility of the ray from the, the road, from the main, the main route here, you wouldn't, I don't even know if you'd even see it from the main route, because it's the way it's situated back there, and probably, and even here is a lot of natural screen in between the residences, you know, in this field. So it's got, you know, that's one of the reasons why we looked at that portion of the farm was because of the, you know, lack of visibility of the project itself.
I know when I met with Eric and he was, he was directing it in that area because he did not want it to be visible to.
Yeah, okay. Do you, I'm sorry, no, please.
So, do you need that eighteen acres to make this project justified?
You know, typically, the maximum allowable, you know, under the New York rules, is a five-megawatt AC project. So generally, with the economies of scale, you know, the larger the project, you know, the better that the economics are, you know, able to work, so. We haven't gotten to the point where we've looked at smaller projects yet to determine the impact of that. But, you know, as of now, you know, the economics are, they're reasonable, not great on this one, but they're, they're definitely reasonable.
But I mean, if this was cut down to fifteen acres, it's not a, a doable.
We, we don't know that yet. Yeah, we haven't determined that yet.
And there were fire advisory board comments for you guys as well, and I, we'll make sure that you get those. They, they came out July ninth, and I think it was mainly related to the access road to the, to the sites and. The fire advisory board, yep.
Okay.
Okay, so make sure we get you those comments.
Is there something up there that would burn, that they would need to have somebody from fire respond to?
I don't, I don't know. They made, they made a comment that they wanted access.
Who knows if the field caught on fire, you know, I mean.
Yeah, typically, you know, most projects that we're working on, the fire department does have feedback and.
Do you want to be spraying water on?
But the roads that you've got drawn in there, the diagonal and the two down, that's non-existent today, right?
Those don't exist.
Right, so that's part of what you would put in and install.
Correct.
But those, those were not paved.
But a light, yeah, just a.
Those would be gravel roads, yeah.
How tall, what's the height of the panels?
The low points, you know, usually about three feet off the ground, high point, you know, seven, eight feet.
Do they move with the sun?
No, these, these won't.
They're stationary?
Yep, these are stationary.
And then, is there any sort of, what happens once the usable, let's just say, the usable, like, if something happens and then just no longer generating power for the grid, is there any way that these get removed from the site, or how does your, how does your company work with that?
Yeah, we already have in the, in the financial models a decommissioning set up for that, so we build that into the project, the removal of the project, you know, after the twenty to thirty-year lifespan of the project.
You know, I think the, the real thing you were looking for was some kind of feedback on Plan A versus Plan B, right, and unfortunately, with one easel, you've been limited to showing one. Do you want to hold them both up and, and let's?
Oh yeah, sure.
I would ask the board to kind of comment on, you know, likes and dislikes about the options here, because I think that's really what you were looking for tonight, right? So, I mean, thoughts?
There's certainly the federal wetlands that you're talking about disturbing, which, you know, is gonna cause a lot of headaches for you as well as potential impacts for the town. So just, you know, first blush, I would be looking at the option that's up there now, because you're not disturbing that.
Good.
What are some of the other positives and negatives, though, between the two? In one case, I know you're trying to save a little bit more farmland available, which I presume means that there still is gonna be a working farm there?
Correct, yeah. I, I don't know the specifics of the operations there. I'm not that familiar with the operations of the farm, but yeah, that's the intention from the owner is to, you know, keep that, as much of the fields that are viable for farming, operational.
Because they, they have a, currently an exemption, right, so how that may or may not affect their, their tax liability may play into where, how they set up the fields.
And I would assume there's gonna be a lease?
Uh, yeah, so be leasing land from the Phillips Farm, correct.
But other positives or negatives between the two? Anything in particular?
No, it came down to really, you know, tree clearing, you know, a little bit of, you know, differences in impact on the the neighbors, the butters, you know, one has slightly more, maybe not that significant, but, you know, tree clearing and then, you know, impact the operation. Those are the two main ones.
Have you spent any time trying to, to figure out whether the neighbors are gonna be in favor of this or not?
Uh, we have not yet. We wanted to get feedback from, you know, the board first, and, but, you know, in, in many circumstances and other projects who have had, you know, neighbor, you know, feedback sessions, you know, for example, just to, you know, get their take on, on things and.
And they are equal in terms of capacity, right?
Correct.
So, you know, back to the question, I don't see a big difference from my standpoint.
I mean, I can appreciate the saving of the farmland, but to me, it just boils down to, you know, what the complications are with the, with the wetlands. I think that's gonna determine it more than us, because I'd love to see a little more farmland saved, you know, per the drawing on the left, but you know, if that's gonna cause a lot of complications and impact wetlands, you know, then I wouldn't want to see that disturbed either, so.
I'm in agreement with Steve.
Yeah, I mean, I would prefer that, but not at the expense of wetlands. So I, I think they're gonna give you as much input or more.
Jason, Chris?
I'd rather the same agreement.
Please, Chris?
You said it's a five-megawatt capacity, so the tenants, like safety hazard issues, something like windstorm, something like that, how does that affect the, the customers and itself? If you, let's say, power production is almost firm, what's the point?
Yeah.
Then we get their discount.
Well, they're still getting power from the grid, so in reality, the electrons from, the electricity generated from this project aren't going directly to the customers. It's all gets, you know, out to the grid and all gets mixed together, but that's why you have, you know, ISO New York that manages the entire, you know, grid. You know, they're, have the ability to adjust and, and, you know, manage, you know, load versus, you know, production.
They'll just lose their, lose their discount for that month, though?
No, because we, we offer, we have a guarantee. Yeah.
Okay, because I other, I know other community solar farms, you do lose your discount when.
Yeah, we have a guaranteed production in our contracts typically, so.
Okay, any other? Okay. Any other comments or questions? Did you get what you wanted?
Yeah, yep. And I actually have a couple of questions for the board or, or Michelle, if you can answer them. I believe this is a tier-three solar operation, so that means we would need a special permit from the town board. Is that correct? Okay. So does, who would be lead agent for Seeker and?
Um, it's probably going to be the planning board would do, because we'll, we'll be ultimately doing site plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
And you're, and you're going to be doing a long-form EAF and submitting that?
Yes. Yep, we'll do a full package in our next submission. Okay, so we would come before the planning board to get site plan approval, then get referred back to the town board for the special.
So probably what we'll do is, once you've submitted your EAF, we'll, we'll declare our intent to be lead agency.
Okay.
And then we'll start the circula- the seeker process, start the circulation and all that.
Okay.
Because you will need, I'm guessing, you're putting, is that, that driveway there, there's no existing driveway there, so you're going to even need DOT approval for, for the roadway perm?
For the curb cut, yep. Yep, we're looking to see what permits are required for that. All right. And then the, the setback is 200 feet in a residential zone for the solar operation. What can be within that 200 feet? Can the, is it just the panels? Oops, sorry. The, the panels need to be 200 feet?
Oh, you're asking, can the road be within the?
Can the road, can the fence, perimeter fence and, and things like that?
This is a relatively new law here, so I'm actually, I might have to get back to you on that and look through it, because I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay. The way I read it, it said, um, solar operations need to be setback 200 feet from the property line. So I would think it would be the panels, and that's what we've seen in other towns, but just a clarification.
Would have been my first thought, but I want to read through it to make sure.
Yep, sounds good.
What kind of fence are you talking about?
It would be an eight-foot-high chain link fence, and that's per the electric code.
And that would also may require a variance.
Yeah, the eight-foot fence would definitely need a variance, so.
Okay.
Even if it's part of the.
So I, I'm not, well, I'm not sure about that either, because it's also a farm operation, so that, that. Well, I'll get back to you on that as well, okay?
Yeah, and I'll look into that one as well, if that's required.
Okay. Anything else? Eric, no more question?
I'm good.
Any other concerns from the board?
No, and I, I mean, if anybody, I don't know if this is one of the ones, and you don't, maybe you don't have to answer now, but this may, maybe you want to go out and do a site visit of this to see what, where they're looking to put the, the panels. And I don't know if that would help you determine which one.
I think.
Wouldn't hurt.
Do a drive-by.
Sure. Uh, well.
And it doesn't have to be like as a group, but I, I'm just, and you could discuss it next time, after they submit for the next discussion, we could go out there.
That's probably one, that'd probably be better. I, I think as this progresses, we'll probably have, once we really know.
Which way it is.
Where it's going. But in the meantime, I do like Steve's idea of drive-by. And I, would anyone mind if we, like, pulled into the back road? Is this the first application? No, no, meaning the other side. Is this the first application for a solar farm?
For, for a big one, yeah. We have, we have the towie one, which earlier was under this as well, yeah.
You know, the one thing I keep concentrating on is the, is the relatively short distance from those and the residences behind it. It might be interesting to have some photographs that we could take a look at, that kind of show the, the screening that you had mentioned earlier and the fact sightlines are going to be limited.
There's a grade change there too, right?
The grade change, and we're going to have a 200-foot buffer.
Gotcha.
And, and there's already disturbance right by 82. That's completely removed from this. That's all about just the pipeline project, right?
Correct.
Has nothing to do with this, okay?
Yep, staying away.
Some dirt pile, you know, you can't.
Just to clarify, if you cease operations, let's say if you had a school district, some municipality, agree with what's standing, my biggest concern is especially, say, if you cease operations, that, you know, a school district doesn't get like a 10% hit on, on what it is. And we, we have a production guarantee.
Okay.
How do you supply it to the grid? Is there any infrastructure or anything other than the panels?
Yeah, well, this access road will be the interconnection down on, is it Route 82?
Yes.
Yep, so the interconnection will be down at this point here.
All underground?
Typically, they have telephone poles, or at least like three or four telephone poles that interconnect with the existing intercellar down there.
Okay.
I mean, there's, one of the requirements in the zoning right now is that, that anything on-site will be placed underground to the event feasible and as permitted by the serving utility, with the exception of the main service connection at the utility company right-ofway and any new interconnection equipment, including without limitation, any poles with new, with new easements and rightaways. So that's the current read in the zoning code.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you.
Yep, thank you for your time.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, Steve, nice meeting.
It's the fire advisory board. You guys are at the top.
Thank you, thank you, Jason. Okay, anything else, or can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Good night.